We're thirty-one.
Okay, we're on, we're on. Um, we're gonna open the Monday, June first, twenty twenty Board of Selectment Meeting for a COVID nineteen discussion today. Claire?
Already?
Already.
No pledge?
What?
No pledge?
We do the pledge at the business meeting.
Yeah, we would at the business meeting.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
We can do as we want.
Okay, well, no, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure we were in sequence here.
So I guess we have a couple more.
So we have twenty-nine cases, so we got two more. And, um, you know, again, no one is seriously ill requiring hospitalization. Um, I was talking to Boston today because I was having some problems with my computer and the program, and I found out that the tracing people that the state hired, they hired like a thousand people.
Right.
And, uh, so they're doing the COVID tracing. Um, I found out they were calling people every single day. And I was like, wow, no wonder they're not answering me, some of them.
Are, are you sure that they're contacting everybody? Because I know of some that never got contacted by the COVID tracing.
Well, the ones before they were hired probably didn't.
Okay.
Okay. So I was surprised that they're calling them every day.
Well, can you explain that? Do you mean they're calling the same home every day?
Correct. That's what I was told today.
Every day?
Yeah.
Like, five days in a row, they're getting a call from a tracer. But what would be the purpose?
Not sure.
Oh.
Not sure. I mean, I, they're on quarantine, so I don't know, you know, as far as exposure goes, who they would be exposing other than people in their home. And if they're, if the people in the home aren't symptomatic, then they won't test them.
Right, but they should be under the assumption that they are positive and should also quarantine.
Correct, correct. They're all on quar- they're all on quarantine.
Right, so is this tracing, um, group, are they calling to assure that people that are supposed to be quarantined are indeed quarantining, or are they asking, have you been in contact with anybody else?
No, no.
Then why are they calling? We don't know why they're calling.
Um, you know, my thought and understanding was they were, um, following the people and making sure that they weren't exposing anyone, or, you know, um, if people didn't, couldn't remember the first time they called, you know, they would think about it and maybe, you know, a follow-up call. I, I have no idea.
Claire, how many of those are, how many homes are under quarantine still, do you know?
Five.
So five?
Five.
Five homes, five people?
Five homes.
How, how many of those twenty-nine cases have recovered?
Quite a few, quite a few, you know, uh, up until, I mean, there, there's one person that I spoke to recently, and, um, she's been like on quarantine for like almost a month, and that, that's happened a few times, you know, because they get more symptoms. They're pretty well cleared up, and then more symptoms come along. Or someone else in the family becomes symptomatic, you know, like a week and a half down the road.
They gotta start the whole cycle all over again.
Right.
Bill, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, did, so we don't really know, um, have you been able to inquire what the traces, what questions that they're, they're asking?
No, I just found out about this, you know, um, phone calling thing, uh, today, so I, I'm gonna look into it.
So we don't know if they're monitoring the person's health, monitoring the person's movements, monitoring the person's activities, monitoring the comings and goings of the household?
I would say no about the health, because I heard a story from one, one person that I called today that I've been talking with, um, who's positive, and she told me she'd been complaining about a particular thing to this person in Boston for a while. And I didn't know about it. She never told me. So I said, well, you know, you should call your doctor, talk to him.
I, I guess in a positive, no, we're at twenty-nine cases currently.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and only two in the past two weeks. So that's very encouraging sign.
That's good. And statewide, the numbers went down quite a bit, you know, um, like a couple of weeks ago, and then they started rising again, and now they're on a downward trend. I don't know what it is today.
The daily cases and the daily deaths are, I've seen go, go down to below, I think the deaths are below fifty a day, which was, I think, Friday, the last numbers I saw.
Yeah. Now that-
That was Saturday. It went up a little, it was higher yesterday. I think it was like seventy-six deaths, and there was more cases yesterday. They haven't released today's numbers yet.
Right.
What we do know, though, is there is a, there is a pattern of a lag of approximately one to two weeks, um, before you see cases surge. And I'm wondering, given the nice weather we've had, if we're gonna see that resurgence in, in a couple of three weeks, hopefully not.
Well, you know, things have opened up, and people are a little more active than they were, so.
Much more.
You know, it was expected that some of the numbers would go up.
Have you seen this? This is, um, Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It's the Outdoor Recreation Advisory Task Force.
No.
It's, um, it's, uh, basically, um, an advisory kind of group, I guess, by the state on implementing guidelines for opening up beaches, parks, recreation municipal spaces, fishing, hunting, things like that. Um, maybe I can send you a copy so that you can speak to it next time on, on how to advise this board on certain phases, how do we do it safely, uh, safe, safe, safely and successfully? God, um, that was a tough one to get out. And just so that we're all on the same page when it comes to opening up these.
Well, thankfully, we don't have a beach to contend with.
Well, we kinda do. It's almost viewed as a beach when you think of the number of boaters coming in and out of there on a, on a daily basis, especially on the weekends. They get some high traffic at the boat ramp once we open that up.
Hmm, well.
A ton of cars parked along the fence by the, um, both ball fields, and you know they, they're just, um, out there boating, right?
Right, right. I mean, when I think of the beach, I'm thinking of a lot of people on the beach walking, you know, in groups and.
That thankfully we don't have to deal with.
A lot of social activity.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, I, you know, I've been watching some of the news, some of the you just gotta turn off after a while, but my question is that they suggested on one report that the local health boards would be responsible for ensuring that like any construction that's going on, I assume home building would fall into that, that they were following the protocols, that if they weren't socially distanced, they had to have masks on, they had to have a washing stations. I, I'm not sure, but that's what I thought.
As far as new construction?
Well, construction.
Or any kind, repairs?
Not a person on their home constructing. I'm talking about a construction site where.
Construction crews.
Right, and that the local health board would be responsible for ensuring that the people working there were following the protocols that the, whoever the company is, is providing the cleansing and all.
I don't know what's going on, on a commercial level. I'm sorry.
No, wait.
Um, commercially, I don't know what they're doing, because I never see them. I drive by this site over here by the cemetery, and I never see them. So, um, but on a private, um, level, they're not wearing masks. I know that.
Well, people working on someone's home, you mean, something like that.
Right, right.
I think I was understanding, if I understood the report correctly, because I've been asking again, how much of this are we gonna have to do? How much is the state gonna do? In this case, it seemed to be more like a commercial construction site that we're, just like with restaurants in town, we're the responsible, not we, but you.
So if I may, we are responsible for all enforcement. The state is not doing any enforcement in local towns.
Okay, that's.
Everything that needs to be enforced under the COVID guidelines falls under the jurisdiction of the local Board of Health. That is going crystal clear in the law.
That's construction, restaurants, gas station.
If people are supposed to be wearing masks under the law for construction phase, then the health agent is the one who's supposed to be out there enforcing that, if it's, if we get complaints or if he drives by and sees that.
So do we wait for a complaint, or is just, I mean, I thought we sent him around to the business.
Our health agent is, uh, making rounds, and, um, I think we have the ability to get someone from the state for, you know, uh, helping with that.
Okay.
Um, I've received several calls myself, like on the weekend, because my phone number's on the answering machine, uh, people complaining about, um, particular restaurants not wearing gloves or masks and stuff like that, you know, so I get on the phone and I either call Deb or call, um, Joe, and they follow up on it. There's, there are no fines in place for anything like that, you know, it's just, you know, we have to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Correct.
And then he follows up on that as well.
But is he following up with a commercial construction site as well? I, I don't think we discussed that at all.
That hasn't come up, um, to my knowledge, so.
Cause I think we're responsible for that too.
So I'll have to check on that.
Well, there's, there's no fines, there's no punishment, there's no recourse for someone not following it, whether it's personally or a construction company or a business, right? It's just, hey, you should be doing the right thing. That's their only recourse at this point.
Right, and I do think, I mean, we're a small town, we have one health, part-time health agent. So I think for the most part, we fall under complaints, you know, if there's a complaint, he responds. I don't know, and I know we have budgeted extra hours under the grant for him to perform extra work. The state did send out an email that they have enforcement officers, if the local Board of Health wanted to take advantage of that. Um, but I don't know that he has the ability and that, and what he's working each week to physically go to every restaurant, go to every construction site, you know, go everywhere and see if they're following the guidelines, or if he's just responding when calls come in.
So my question is then, are we confident, or can you maybe look into it? Are we responsible just to respond if there's a complaint at this point? Cause now we've been in this COVID.
As far as I know, that's the way it goes.
Well, then that's, that's fine. If you find anything else out, let us know.
I will.
What is the process with these enforcement officers?
I don't know. I just, I saw a notice come out to the local boards of health that the state had, uh, resources available for the enforcement side, because they know a lot of smaller towns don't have the ability to do the enforcement.
So did they send someone in and to say, go enforce this, and what do they do?
Again, I don't know. It falls under the Board of Health, so I really didn't read it too much. Um, I think the, the board would have to decide if they want to take advantage of that and reach out to the state, and I don't know if it's just a free-for-all they come in, or if they have to say, you know, these are the areas where we have concerns. That I don't know.
Can I ask you a quick question? Does this board have the ability to levy fines and/or penalties on these establishments if they do not follow, um, suggested or mandated guidelines?
So I will say, some towns have done that. Um, I, I suppose as the selectmen you could, I think that ultimately falls under the Board of Health. As the enforcement agency, I think they should be the ones levying fines.
But they don't have the manpower to go out and do that. So can they authorize, we'll talk to Chief Gillan in a second about this, can they authorize the, the police to do such enforcement?
Can I comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
There actually is penalties, as far as I know, um, and some that can do civil through, you know, Groveland, but violation of the order or guidance is a criminal offense, and it says, whoever violates any provision of any such executive order or general regulation issued by the governor for the violation of, which no other penalty is provided by law, shall be punished by imprisonment or, or, uh, if not more than one year, or by a fine of not more than five hundred dollars.
Right, but if I could just interrupt, he's made it clear, these are not regulations, these are guidelines. So the mask and the mask order and the, the phased plan, they're not regulations.
And then I thought, I saw something before, like a three hundred dollar civil fine. If you could give warnings was the first suggestion, which I think everybody would do and try to educate, and then you could go to a, a fine, a three hundred dollar fine. Um, and then, um, you know, it could keep escalating, but I don't think here in Groveland you'd ever see that happen. We would work with people and talk to them, but, um, that chapter one eleven, section thirty does give the sole authority to the Board of Health in Groveland, and the police would be called upon to assist. In the only way that we could be enforcement agency, they would have to appoint all the police officers as health agents.
Right.
And then that would be a whole nother union issue to, oh, suddenly police officers become health agents. But, um, we certainly would be there to, to work with them and assist, and we have already, um, forwarded a couple complaints to them, but we do receive complaints now and then, and we just explain to the people that we just don't have the authority. And with the great work and relationship that we have with our community, with all the community efforts that we've made, I'd rather the officers weren't dealing with that, going up to people with their kids and, and talking about not wearing a mask. It's just not our place. It's more of a health concern, but the public safety is our concern too, so we're still willing to work and do whatever we can to help, but.
I'm, personally, I'm reluctant to go out and start issuing fines for not wearing a mask. I would, I would like people to do the right thing.
I agree.
Given the health circumstances and the benefit for everybody in the community to do the right thing. Um, but, you know, with restaurants and even groups of kids and people gathering at the park, or gathering under the gazebo, or walking around together, they're not social distancing, they're not wearing masks, they're not doing what they're supposed to do, and I, I, you, you mentioned educating the public. I mean, we've been doing this for three months, and how much more education do you need before we just realize that you don't care?
Yeah.
Ed, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, Claire, do you, do you find more complaints on the weekends, um, with the business establishments, or?
We haven't really had that many. I think there was one during the week, and the other two were on weekends, if I remember correctly.
There, there hasn't been, um, there hasn't been like a handful of complaints.
No, no.
So it doesn't seem to be a big, big problem.
I can remember three.
So it doesn't seem to be a big problem at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, okay. And, um, I, I, I think the last, uh, last week you said there was, had seventeen, or the people that had the virus had recovered? Is it still at seventeen?
Well, it would be different now. Um, that was the week before, wasn't it?
The week, was it the week before?
I think so, yeah. So we still have, you know, um, five houses on quarantine. Um, all those five houses only have one person positive. It, it's amazing how some of these homes can have, you know, a spouse gets it, the other spouse doesn't get it. They can have three kids, the kids don't get it, but they have to be considered carriers.
Right, cause they'd be asymptomatic on them.
Well, they're not being tested, so we don't know if they got, they could have a very mild symptoms and just seem they didn't get it.
Well, you know, from what I'm seeing, that if, if there are no symptoms, okay?
Yeah.
Then they're not gonna test positive. But if this, like someone, oh, three weeks ago, was diagnosed, and then, um, went for a test, week before last, um, you know, after two weeks, and she still had a little cough, tested positive. So that extended it, you know, and they said, well, come back in a week, we'll check you again. And then she was okay. One little symptom.
So we had twenty-nine total cases, and then only five houses quarantined, so mathematically, all the other houses recovered?
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, relatively, the numbers are low.
Very low.
They are, they are, very well.
The, the problem I see is with the nicer weather and the other groups of kids and parents or whatever, walking around, those numbers are gonna change in the next couple of weeks, where these cases start to resurge, because, again, people aren't following the guidelines, you know, to put a mask on, or to stay six feet apart, or whatever the situation calls for. It's, it's not incredibly difficult to understand the situation, right? You either stay six feet away or you wear a mask, and that's, those are the two things you should be doing. And oftentimes when I'm out and about, I, I don't see either one of those being practiced. You have something else?
Well, I think they, the nurse told us last week too, that had been outside increases the vitamin D, increases your immune system. I mean, it's healthy for people to be outside, so we're typically healthier during this time of year through the summer. So that, that could be part of this pattern, you know what I mean?
It's healthier, but that doesn't mean you can stand shoulder to shoulder and still be compliant with the guidelines, right?
Correct, until we reach the next phase. Right.
If we reach the next phase, because if there's a spike or any kind of surge, so we're gonna, you know, go backwards instead of moving forward.
Correct.
So, again, we go back to the initial response of just do what you're supposed to do.
Do what you're supposed to do, and then when.
Nobody likes this. Nobody's happy about staying home. Nobody's happy about not going out to eat or going to the bar, seeing their friends, but the longer we don't assist everybody in, in performing the right actions, the longer this is gonna drag out, so. Just keep asking people to think about what they're doing, or telling their kids what they should be doing, and hopefully they follow it. I mean, I had this conversation with my kids at home, you know, and it's, it's tough, because they wanna go see their friends, but I'm like, this is what you have to do. And if you don't do it, then I'm gonna ground you. Now, I can't ground a town, but parents and kids should understand what's expected. Bill, do you have anything else?
Um, outdoor dining is permissible now?
Outdoor.
No, not until, so that's supposed to start phase two, but we, I have to caution you all, and it's something I wanted to talk to the police chief about, um, liquor licenses do not cover exterior dining. So there are two restaurants in town that have liquor licenses. They are only available to be consumed inside their dwelling, not if they put picnic tables. That would require them to request an amended liquor license through this board and go through the public hearing process. So for those two establishments, it's the Tea Garden and Pub ninety-seven, um, they are the only two that have, um, on-premises licenses, so it is only in the interior of their building that they can serve alcohol.
My understanding was that, uh, one or both of them are currently, um, serving outside? Is that true?
No one should be serving outside. Right now, that's not allowed in Massachusetts.
I haven't heard that.
So outdoor dining is phase two, scheduled for June eighth, and if they're serving alcohol, that is against their liquor license, and that, that is completely prohibited.
I do not know if they're serving liquor, uh, outside, but I, I had heard reports that they were serving food outside at the picnic tables, and I wasn't aware of that. Um, I said I'd follow up with it today.
Did you hear that recently?
Yes, over the weekend.
Over the weekend.
I didn't observe that. I've been up and down the street a lot.
Well, there's only one that I know of that put picnic tables up.
Right, I haven't seen anybody for it. Only outside has been at, uh, the ice cream place.
But yeah, no, outdoor dining is not permitted yet in Massachusetts.
That is exactly why I brought the, the question up, just to clarify it for, uh, people that are calling me, so I can call them back and say, my understanding is still what it was over the weekend, that it's not permissible, so, um, I imagine someone will follow up with that this week and either confirm or deny or, or put an end to it, one way or another, I guess, until.
Phase two starts Monday?
Supposed to start Monday. They haven't announced that fully. Um, they plan to release guidelines, because they haven't released any of the guidelines for phase two, uh, by the end of this week.
Yeah, I'm sure they're waiting to see if there's any kind of change in the statistics between now and when they wanna release that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, is it possible, um, with the new guidelines, that they may address the issue of every, I assume every restaurant in Massachusetts will be in a similar predicament?
They've addressed it directly to us. They, it is not permitted.
So we have gotten.
You have to go through the legal process if someone wants to amend their liquor license period.
So have the businesses in town all been informed of this?
Yep, the ABCC sends stuff out regularly to the liquor license holders.
So they know.
Uh, yeah, and they've given them the process, and they've stated that, um, you know, that's why some businesses, not so much in this town, but in other communities, you know, when they're doing the takeout of alcohol or delivery, you know, that's fine, because you're consuming it in your own home, not on their premises.
Okay.
Um, we only have one license in town that allows outdoor consumption, and that is the fairways, because he has the outdoor balcony for weddings. Um, no one else is permitted to serve, consume alcohol on their location outside.
And so how long a process would it be for them to ask for this change?
It, well, it can be, I mean, it has to go through the public hearing process for liquor licenses, so they have to request it, it has to go to the board, it has, we have to have a hearing, has to be sent into the ABCC, they have to approve it, we have to issue an amended license.
Okay.
So it's probably easier to wait until this is somewhat over than to go through that process.
Well, it's, I mean, I don't know when they'll allow in- restaurant dining, so it may, it may be, it may not be, I don't really know, but, um, the ABCC has sent out many communications to the restaurant and the license holders.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, moving on to recreational areas, I know that we loosened up the restrictions down at the pines for casual walking and things like that. Um, that's still part of phase one. Right. Um, and we don't know if phase two is going to open that up further yet?
So we, I mean, that's scheduled on phase two. I'm assuming it will open on Monday. Phase two will begin on Monday based on the numbers, as long as they stay low. Um, but again, then I don't know what the guidelines are. So as we talked about last week, the guidelines, it may or may not include, um, like, can open with guidelines, playgrounds, but what are those guidelines? Like, that's what we still don't know, if we will have the capability to then follow those guidelines.
Everything else that was part of that.
Um, and then I had spoken to the chief, I asked him to be here, because I know last week the question of enforcement came up, and Deb, the chair of the Board of Health, thought it would be the police doing the enforcement, but if it's COVID-related, it really falls under the Board of Health.
Right.
Um, so I wanted him here. I, I assumed Deb was coming again tonight, but, um, to have a conversation that if we, you know, maybe it's that we can't open until Tuesday, until we meet again on Monday and iron it, what those guidelines are, but, um, I just thought it would be helpful to have a conversation with Board of Health and the chief about what it could look like come next week if we open up the pines.
So chief, you want more of a, um, educational conversation, more than an enforcement conversation?
Yeah, I think that's fair, and again, with, with our community.
Yeah.
We want that.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't wanna go to fines and enforcement and, you know, really bear down on people when, you know, there's other things that are happening in, in the world right now, but, I mean, we gotta do, I think we gotta do a better job of keeping groups apart and masks, wearing masks, and some other things that go along with the, the current state of affairs until things die down even more.
The pines was an easy enforcement, because there was an order from the Board of Selectmen. It was the town prop, and he, he didn't want folks there, is the way we understood it, once we ironed things out. So that was easy, but it is gonna be difficult if it's open for some things and not others, and.
Right.
Um, again, if it comes into a border health issue, if you're gonna let people down there.
Right.
Personally, I would love to see the place opened up ASAP, especially for dog walkers and boaters and everybody else, so I, I would encourage to open it as soon as it's safe to do so, and then we won't be able to enforce anything down there. That's the only problem.
So we're back to relying on people to do the right thing?
The right, yeah.
At all times. Anybody have anything on Bill? Uh, Ed?
I still get, I'm still getting complaints about the, um, the boat ramp, and, you know, they're looking, looking across the river, the docks are full over there, you look upriver, you go across the, uh, the Bates Bridge, you look north, uh, the private docks, they're, they're all, they're, they're starting to fill up. Um, in the mornings, I've seen people coming down river, there was a pontoon boat coming down river the other day. It looks like there's a boat, uh, moored at, uh, out on our side of the river. Uh, I don't know if anybody noticed that.
It's our dock master.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but, uh, where is that, what phase is the boat, uh, the boat ramp?
It's whatever phase the Board of Selectmen wished to make it, and that's, that's the issue I've talked about.
Well, the hard part is it's part of the pine complex.
If we take those barriers down, so it's up to you all.
And it's Board of Selectmen purview and not private property.
Correct.
So if I owned it, I could open it up, but the town owns it.
And like I've told people that have, I mean, we get complaints on it, and I've told them, they don't have to launch their boat in Groveland. They can go across the river and launch it.
Right.
You can take a day pass to launch across the river. That's privately owned, there's someone standing there manning those docks all day long. We don't have that ability here.
Well, but we are gonna wait to see the guidelines. I mean, I feel like we're, we shouldn't be sending out such a, a negative message until we see the guidelines.
Right, which won't be till Friday, the earliest.
Okay? Right, I mean, we've closed off everything in the town for now, and it's gonna stay that way until we see the guidelines, and I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to start to allow some things to open. I mean, it's, it's been difficult these months, and I think everybody has felt it, and I also feel like what I see is the majority of the town has done exactly what we've asked of them. I see kids on bikes with the mask hanging around their necks, ready to pull it up if they need to, people walking, have a mask, people driving with masks. I mean, you know, I feel like the town has really done a tremendous job, and, and, um, the fact that we didn't have a huge surge in this town is clear evidence that, for the most part, everybody did exactly what we asked them to do. And as always, you know, people have free will, we can't walk around and, you know, tell everybody what to do every minute of the day. We need to trust that as we go through the phases and tell them what the governor is saying, that people will follow it. At some point, we're gonna have to trust them. We don't- At some point, we're going to have to trust them. We don't have enough enforcement to stand there and watch every single thing.
Right, I mean, for every group you, or two groups you see doing the right thing and it is a positive experience, you see another group that's doing the completely wrong thing, it doesn't matter.
Well, that's the way it's kind of always been. I mean, they're just saying that the numbers in Groveland, I think, with only five homes under quarantine, are pretty good showing that-
Right, and the, the goal is to keep it like that and not have any kind of increase, which comes back to some are doing the right thing and some aren't.
Well-
Like that Sesame Street thing, one of these kids is doing their own thing.
I guess I'm hopeful that, you know, I know myself personally, it's become a habit now, you know, I come home, wash my hands when I get in the door, get in the car, use a little Purell. You know, I, it's become a habit now. And, um, you know, my husband travels a lot, he's always done that. But now I'm doing it all the time. So perhaps more people have now become more conscious of the habit, you know. I wear the mask in the supermarket, I figured out the one-way directions after getting it wrong. You know, but, so it's become a habit. I stand back from people in the lines, you know, all these things now have become a habit for me. And I'm not going to change that habit right now, just because they say I can stand closer. It's, it's not a difficult habit, so I'll do that. And that should help.
Bill, anything else?
You know, currently, as far as the Outdoor Recreation Advisory Task Force goes, phase two, athletic fields and courts, expansion for sports allowed. They both have the same, I don't know why it's on page nine and page seven, it's very confusing. All athletic fields and courts open for drills, basketball, soccer, lacrosse, hockey, et cetera, for groups under public health guidance, no games. So, is that at the control of the Board of Health still?
No, I think it's the state public health guidelines that haven't come out yet.
And one section says continued sanitizing and cleaning protocols, and the other section, that phrase is just eliminated. What kind of sanitizing and cleaning protocols, we don't know yet what are going to be required, is that correct?
Right, initially I had read that they were going to require sanitizing stations at outdoor facilities. I, I don't know if that's the case. I don't know if we would be allowed to open the bathrooms if we can't have someone, they were talking about hourly cleanings. We don't have those capabilities, so we have to see what the guidelines are going to require before we can determine what can be open.
Right, and we know already, based on conversations we've had with you, that because the federal government and state governments in bigger cities in the country and around the world are bidding for these same, um, resources as we are, we're basically being a small fish in a really big ocean. We're just out of luck. We're not going to be able to afford to bid against these bigger rivals to get the resources we need for the most part.
Right, I mean, it's, it's, it's really a crapshoot. I mean, you just saw my office, it's piled up with boxes, because when I get an email that something's available, I jump on and grab it. Um, I got an email last week about the sanitizing defoggers that were available, that I got two of them for the buildings. But it's only a matter of when it's available, if we can get it. So, every ti, I mean, we still cannot buy cleaner and hand sanitizer. I mean, I found it down in Tennessee, um, but there are certain things that, right, when these guidelines come out and if, if sanitizing, outdoor sanitizing stations are required, everybody's going to jump on them because everybody needs them. And the governor has commented that they understand that that's part of the limitation of opening up, is these things are just not available.
Right, so, just kind of trying to see into the future. If we're going to be required to have these sanitizing stations around, that may mean also that we may not be able to open the ballfields because we don't have the equipment necessary to sanitize and clean these things after every group's use.
So, again, I will state, I mean, yes, that's possible. I will state that they've been very careful to call these guidelines, they are not regulations. Again, it would fall on this board to decide if the state guideline requires us to, or the state guideline encourages us to have sanitizing stations and we don't have them, that would be up to you guys to decide what to do. Do we choose to say we can't find them, so we're going to open those without the sanitizing stations that are recommended? Or do we choose to wait for the equipment to become available? Those are decisions that this board will have to make.
So in other words, Governor Baker, it's not time to pass the buck yet to cities and towns, right? We need the experts telling us what to do and give us realistic guidelines on how we can do this safely so that the health and, and welfare of the citizenry of the towns and cities in this Commonwealth are safeguarded to the greatest extent possible. Wouldn't you say that?
Yes.
Thank you, Governor, please help us out here.
Yes, that's what he's doing, but they're not, but, and, and they understand, they are in the same situation. He's saying that, you know, the state offices can open more fully, but they don't have the resources that are needed in the state house either.
Right, but what you're saying is phase two opens on Monday, and we're going to get guidelines on Friday.
Most likely.
And how, get those guidelines out to the people and to educate them to, so that they get, need, to know what they need to know in, in a timely enough fashion that this doesn't explode in our face. It doesn't seem that two days over a weekend is, is really the, the, the best time to do it.
Well, just because it comes out Friday doesn't mean we have to abide by it Monday. It's up to us whether or not we want to take more days to make sure that that message gets out on Wednesday or Thursday.
Oh, I know, but some people, you know, how it is, they'll, they'll see it and they'll run with it.
Monday, you say, good to go, yeah.
And, and I, I fear that without adequate time, you know, we're just going to make mistakes. You know, there's going to be unintended consequences of failures in planning. That's my concern.
Right. Um, moving on to reopening plan for employees.
Well, did we finish with the police department and enforcement of, of stuff? Or are we waiting to find out what the guidelines are?
I'd like to see the guidelines.
I'd like to see the guidelines.
Yeah, the guidelines will be helpful.
Chief, what do you, you want to see the guidelines or?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. How do we know what to enforce without them?
Ed, what do you, Ed, do you want to see the guidelines or?
The guidelines, guidelines.
Well, how do we know what to enforce without seeing it, right?
Well, to me, it's more who's enforcing. That's the issue, is who's going to do the enforcement that, um, again-
I think it's a two-pronged, really. It's the Board of Health doing their, um, visits and assessments and complaints, and then it's also the police, uh, doing their community policing and education on why things are the way they are and what the expectation is. I think it's both. That's my perspective. I don't know if anybody else has any-
And passing along any possible complaints that the police may receive to the proper authorities, the Board of Health, so they can, you know, further investigate, um, the complaint and make sure it's, it's real and then take the appropriate actions where, where necessary.
Okay with you?
Yes, we have done that, we've-
Well, I know, I think that's just a great plan for right now to continue.
Yeah, it was important to keep that line of communication open, so we have, and Claire's been great keeping us up to date, and, um, and we reach out to her when we need to, so. Again, I think people in Groveland have been great. The, the only issue we've had is bigger groups from out of town, you know, so.
Yes.
Otherwise, I think we're in good shape, but we, we have a lot of dedicated people working and the residents are committed to, I think, so. I think we're in a good place.
So, uh, reopening plan for employees, did that message go out, uh, after the last meeting?
So I did. Um, so after the last meeting, I put a tentative schedule. Uh, I had a couple people get back to me about, um, childcare issues and working alternate schedules. I had someone get back to me saying they were concerned with their shared office space, that they don't want to be in the office because it's close quarters at the same time. Um, so it was more just, you know, I told them nothing's definitive, I'll give everybody a heads up when the time's coming, but I just wanted them to be able to have some information for planning.
Okay.
So, um, I did the same thing to the boaters. I emailed the boaters and told them that tentatively, we were hoping for next week. Um, we started selling, um, the boat ramp permits and told them that when the board makes an official decision, I'll let them know. So I notified all the respective groups. I've been in touch with, um, the Groveland baseball folks who asked about it. Um, told them the same thing, we're really waiting for guidelines on phase two before we can decide how we move forward. So, I've been in touch with most of the stakeholders, if you will.
Okay. Um, anybody else have anything to add that wasn't covered? Ed?
Uh, no.
Uh, just the childcare issue. I know that's a huge concern, and right now it's, it's a big problem for a lot of people.
It is, but just before the meeting, and I haven't had a chance to read it, the state issued revised childcare opening. So I don't know when it starts, I haven't checked it to see if they're going to open it up sooner. Um, so it may be less of an issue based on whatever he released today.
What was the original phase for that, was it?
June twenty-nine.
So, phase three or four?
It was, there was no, it was not tied to a phase, it was pre-phase. It was just June twenty-nine.
Determined, determined date.
Yep.
I know that there have been some, uh, private industry out there, um, that have let their employees know if they have legitimate childcare concerns and they are currently working from home, they will be allowed to continue to work from home as long as their childcare, um, needs are not met adequately. Uh, so I just want to make sure that, you know, wherever possible, we can offer that same, um-
And that's pretty much what I've told, um, you know, one employee asked if they could come in earlier in the day, and I said that was fine. There's really only, there's in-town hall, there's three with young kids. Um, and I've spoken to all three of them about it. So, um, elsewhere, um, most folks are already working and, you know, the police, they're all still working full-time. The highway and the water and sewer, they're working regular schedules for the most part. Um, so I am, I don't think it'll be a, a huge issue here.
As long as they aren't negatively impacted by, by this, that's why I wanted, you know.
Right. And I did tell folks that, you know, when they came back, if there was concern with being in, you know, we're lucky here that we only have a few shared office spaces, um, that we could use this room, we could put someone here and someone in the back of the room and allow them, so that there's some separate space. Um, one person did say to me that's, you know, I'd rather just continue to work from home where I, instead of sitting in a meeting room all day, I can just do the same work at home. Um, but we still have a few weeks to figure all those things out, so.
Kathy, anything else to add?
No, I think everything's being covered well.
Um, the one thing I did want to bring up is that, uh, maybe we don't have a separate COVID meeting going forward. Maybe we have the next regular Board of Selectmen meeting with a COVID agenda item, and then afterwards it's every two weeks. I don't know if anybody else has any input into that.
I think that's a, at this point in time, it might be a wise-
Unless things change, of course.
A wise suggestion, I think, that we can, um, kind of put those to the back burner for, uh, for the foreseeable future. Provided everything continues to trend that, you know, the way it's going now, I, I think that's a reasonable suggestion.
Ed, any input on that?
Uh, no, um, it, uh, we, we have to meet next week anyway, and that's, uh, we get, should be able to get the guidelines by then. It's a regular meeting. Uh, we got, uh, after that, we got, uh, uh, coming up with a couple of weeks town election and, uh, town meeting, so. Uh, I don't have my calendar with me, but when would the next, uh-
Yeah, so, next week will be a regular meeting. The fifteenth, there will not be a meeting because that's the election. The twenty-second will be town meeting, which would have been a regular meeting, but I will need you to have a regular meeting on the twenty-ninth because we will have to do fiscal year-end business, like reappointments and things like that, that we haven't been able to do elsewhere in the month. So, um, so the two Mondays, so it'll be ten, the eighth and the twenty-ninth will be meetings, and then the fifteenth and the twenty-second will be town business, the election and town meeting. And then, once July rolls around, we should just be back on the every other, um, unless something happens with the phases or-
Yeah, I think that that works.
Okay.
Okay with you?
Well, yeah, I mean, my, my only concern would be that, um, if we elect it, obviously, but, um, would be that, uh, these phases, as, as we've seen, they're kind of confusing, and they never say it, in these paperwork that you read, it's back and forth. And I just want to make sure that, um, there's a way for people in this town to get clear information about what's going to be open and why it's open and what the conditions are. So as long as we're able to get that information out clearly, we don't need to sit here.
Well, Denise shares that with, um, Twitter and, uh, the Facebook page for Groveland.
Correct, but, I mean, by meeting, I think it kind of like rubber stamps because we go back over what the rules are now and what they, what they can do. So, by the end of June, there's, we should be back to the new normal if they're predicted. Nope, we're not, no.
Well, the phases aren't supposed to finish until July-
Okay.
Twenty-eighth or something?
July twentieth should be the start of phase four, if all goes according to plan.
So that would be my only concern, is just see where, how, how smoothly it's going, and if there's confusion, I think we should have a short meeting on it just to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, that was the-
Because that's, it did, it was helpful during all of this to have these occasions to touch base.
Right, and if there's a need, if there's information changes and there's more questions or there's, uh, an influx of cases, then we can certainly go back to an every-week type of thing, but-
Right.
I think at this point, getting through election and town meeting and everything else that we go back to every-
We're meeting a lot this month already.
Every two weeks and then-
Do we need a motion?
Assess it from there.
Um, so you'd like me to keep, though, the COVID discussion at the beginning of every regular meeting?
Yes, I would say that that's probably-
The time being.
Probably appropriate.
But I think we suspend the, you know, every other.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
They might miss us though.
No, not, anything else? No, okay, you have a motion to adjourn it?
Well, yes, I, I, quickly, again, I'd like to thank Claire, the Board of Health, the police, the fire, the essential workers, the, uh, the grocery store workers, William being one of them. Um, it's because you folks get up and go to work every day that we're allowed to do what we do. And I want to thank you, the, the trash collectors, I never thought about them, but talking to the fellow that collected my trash this week, I realized how important he is to all of us. If they weren't working every day, things would be pretty ugly out there. So I just want to say again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you folks, for what you do every day to keep us safe and sound. I appreciate it, so does my family. Keep on doing it. Great job.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn at five fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Claire, I'll print another copy.
Oh, thank you, Bill.